To inform the parent or guardian of the criteria for early entry that are requests must be made prior to July 1 of the year of the enrollment and the test will occur no later than two weeks before the start of the school year. The superintendent and the designated will forward any request for early entry tests to the school services department responsible for conducting the evaluation. That was a change. It's going to school services department now. And the school services department will contact the parent or guardian to schedule the test and determine the location of the test. And then, early criteria for kindergarten is a child may obtain the chronological age of five between September 1 and September 30th may seek early entry into kindergarten based on evaluation of the school psychologist on the following assessment: a measured full-scale cognitive ability on a standardized individual IQ assessment, the commensuration academic achievement in reading or math in the standardized individual achievement assessment, and average to high-average social-emotional behavioral function on a district checklist. Then, the early entry for first grade is a measured full-scale cognitive ability on a standardized IQ test, commensuration academic achievement in reading or math on a standardized standard individual achievement assessment, and average to high-average social-emotional behavioral function on a district checklist. The difference is the second, the first grade admissions will be done by the school services department.
Okay. Thank you very much for going through that. We have one more public--
The only additional comments, first of all, I'd like to apologize for the quick policy and final policy revisions not being posted. And I think that probably occurred because we were taking a look at what some of the parents had forwarded the district in trying to incorporate as much of that into the new policy as possible. And it was extremely helpful to us, and those changes are reflected in the new policy. For one, we did remove the IQ requirement, and people have to understand, or residents need to understand. Prior to this, Bethel gave no latitude for a child born after September the 1st. And based on the research that was shared with us, that was changed as well. And so, those are just two of the changes that occurred. And again, I would say thank you for that information, and it is reflected in the new policy. I'm not sure exactly what happened, but we will get that posted ASAP.
Thank you, Beth. Appreciate it. Okay, we have one more comment from an Amy Morrow at 231 Logan Road. "I'm sending in my comments now because I will not be able to get online and watch the meeting tonight due to other commitments. I have a lot of reservations regarding the approval of this contract, and here are the top few. I feel that during the current financial situation of the district due to the tax cut and the current economic developments due to COVID-19 that many of our residents and businesses are facing, it is not in the best interest to offer such a steep pay raise to an employee with no increase in job duties or expectations. I also feel that this is a huge slap in the face to the current district employees that have been working without any contract resolution for the past few years. If an increase such as this was to be approved, I'd like to hear what increases in responsibilities come with. It has been widely talked about that this employee had planned to leave the district, which makes this increase feel like a pension padding. Will he be responsible to share his knowledge with other employees so that should he decide to retire, there are informed employees to manage the systems in place? Thanks for your time, Amy Morrow." Next on the agenda, we've got committee reports. Do you have any report, Ms. Rule?
Yes, I do. I just want to say that the students from Still Center will be recognized, and they will be recognized by Still Center going to each of the houses of the seniors, along with the representative board member. I'll be representing Bethel. We will give them a sign that's been customized with their name. It says Bethel Park Students, Still Center. And we'll take a picture with them. And then, on to the next one. We're also going to do a virtual presentation, we're putting one together, that they will also receive for their senior recognition through Still Center. The AIU is looking at several options for how schools may have to operate in the fall. They're looking at the various options that can be given and offered to various districts depending on their size, bus transportation, and other options. As far as SHASTA, some of you are familiar with the SHASTA conference that we have every year, and we recognize students that have overcome challenges. And we always select two seniors this year. They will not have their ceremony, but they will receive their certificates, and they're being sent out by Mr. Kudovic of South Park, who is now the president of the superintendents association. And that's it for me.
Any other board, any other committee reports? I'm reporting about the recreation department. Unfortunately, due to COVID, just about everything has been canceled in the municipality, the recreation programs and so forth. There will be some camps for the children, but they will follow all the restrictions and regulations that are advised through the CDC in Pennsylvania. They won't be the similar kinds of camps that the recreation department has held in the past. And I believe they're doing it in cooperation with some of the childcare facilities in the area. But other than that, the 4th of July, end of June celebrations been canceled, as have other things, such as the Memorial Day Parade last the other day. So, that's all we have regarding the recreation department. And the Shade Tree Commission has not met either because of the COVID-19. Okay, we're moving to business items then. And the first item we have is the consent agenda, and we started this last month. So, we have 24 items on the consent agenda. And is there anyone who would like any of those items held out and put into the regular agenda at this time? Okay. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda items 1 through 24. Moved by Mr. Spakusa.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Rule. Any comments on those 24 items? For the most part, they are the typical items that are approved on a monthly basis. They're items that we had minimal discussion about last week and decided to put on the consent agenda because we had no further questions. Okay. Can you open the voting, please? That would be on number 25?
Motion passes nine to zero.
Consent agenda passed nine to zero. We are now coming up on the curriculum committee. And if you haven't refreshed your board docs in the public sector, we made some recent changes right before the meeting. You might want to refresh your board docs. Mr. Scouso.
Under curriculum committee, we have three items. The first item, curriculum facilitators for 2020 through 2021. Number two, Bethel Park School District Special Education Plan for 2020 through 2023. And number three, professional development. Would anyone like any of these items withheld?
We have to do one at a time.
Okay, okay, Mr. Scouso, we're going to have to motion and second each one of them separately because of the way the agenda now reads in board docs. So, if you just take them one by one, that would be great.
Item one, curriculum facilitators for 2020 through 2021. Any discussion? Would anyone like this held out?
I need a second on that.
Second.
Okay, so it's been moved by Mr. Scouso and seconded by Mr. Christensen. Any comments? Any questions about those? Okay.
Motion passes nine to zero.
Motion passes nine, zero.
Under curriculum committee, we have number two, Bethel Park School District Special Education Plan for 2020, 2023. Would anyone like this withheld?
I need a second?
Second.
It's been motioned by Mr. Scouso and seconded by Mr. Modrak. Last time, we had some discussion on this particular item. Are there any more questions about the special education plan? I know, Mr. Christensen, you had some concerns about it. It was just a, it's the plan that we have to approve by the middle of June. And I believe, Mr. Nagel, you said that there's somebody who could come in and talk to us at the end of June, giving us some more information, even though we've already passed it?
Yes, I reached out just a little while ago to see if she'd be able to present to us at either the committee meeting or the next board meeting, just to give us a better idea. But I do ask that, for the time being, since we're voting on it now, if Dr. Imperio and/or Mrs. Sutton or Dr. Shu could touch on it also, and just to let the public know what it's all about.
Mrs. Sutton or Dr. Shu, do you want to just give a brief explanation of what this plan is for the public, especially for those who weren't listening last week?
Sure, this is Lori Sutton. So, basically, all districts in Pennsylvania complete a special education plan every three years. It's part of the district's comprehensive plan, and it's mainly an assurance that the school district will uphold all of the regulations of the IDEA and Chapter 14 for students with IEPs, students with special education services and programs. And it outlines some of the mandatory questions and how our district responds to those questions in our programs and services. And then, it outlines some of the more specific things that we offer. That would be in a very short answer to what the plan is for.
Thank you. And it has been on our website for the last week for review. And, Mrs. Sutton, can you repeat also, there was an opportunity for parents to have input into this?
Yes. There's only a requirement for one administrator, one parent, one special ed teacher, and one general education teacher. Those are the minimums. We actually had a district committee of 14 individuals that comprised all of those roles. Additionally, we did a survey and had just a few respondents that we also surveyed. And that's how we got input from parents as well as the staff.
Thank you very much. Any other questions?
I'd just like to make a general request on this. I understand we do this because the state asks us to do this, but I don't know why we do this, okay? Meaning, what's the goal? What are we trying to change? What are our objectives from doing this plan? And so, I guess, just, my only request is that when we put together plans like this in the future, is that let's try to get them done three months before they're due so we can have a board meeting to talk about kind of an executive-level summary of, in this plan, in this 43 pages, or whatever it is, what is it? You know, what's our current state? What are our goals? You know, what are we trying to change? And then, within this plan, what are the elements to get us there? You know, if the whole plan is, we're just going to keep doing what we're doing, fantastic, okay? That's the executive summary. But if we're putting together the plan to move us in a direction, what are those incremental changes of the plan that we're looking at doing? That would be a really good, I don't think it'd be a terribly long discussion, but it'd be nice to have that kind of summary.
I think one of the things, Mr. Christensen, is that this plan, based on fulfilling the needs of children in special needs programs, is that it's kind of like an assurance to the state that the district is going to perform those things that they have said they're going to perform with those children through IDPs and et cetera. But clearly, some more information could be shared with the board on that. But it's kind of a document, again, that says, we're held responsible for doing what we have said that we're going to do.
And as we move towards our planning for strategic plan, this would be something we should incorporate--
Right.
--as part of that.
Yeah, I'm just looking at, there's a lot of work that was put in here. There's a lot of words, a lot of pages. But I'm not an expert in this area. I'm better with the numbers, okay? But I have a hard time understanding what's the point? You know, what are the main objectives that we're trying to do? What are we trying to change over the next three years during the term of this plan?
We'll keep a note of that and also try to remember in three years when it comes up again.
Yeah, or any other plans. I imagine, you know, there's other reports or proposals like this we're putting together. It's just, if we're going to vote on a plan like this, we should build in some time, a couple of months at least, in advance to do a little bit longer review and a presentation during the board meeting.
Mrs. Sutton, just a quick question about it. As we go forward building our strategic plan, are we able to revisit this since it's guidance and, or it's benchmarks and regulations that we have to fulfill with the state? Are we able to revisit this as part of the strategic plan? Or can we only do it every three years?
The best that I can answer that, Mr. Nagel, is that this plan is every three years. But if we have staffing change, there's something called a special education plan revision notice. It's an acronym called the SEPRIN. So, if we needed to add staff, delete staff, change staff, that's part of a revision to the plan. As Dr. Imperio stated, the primary intent is that it's an assurance that we're following, you know, the regulations. But yes, I think if we go into the strategic plan and make a change, we could certainly incorporate that into what we do in special education.
Thank you, Mrs. Sutton.
Thank you, Mrs. Sutton. Any other comments? Okay, vote.
Motion passes nine to zero.
Motion passes nine, zero.
Okay, we have number three, professional development. Would anyone like this withheld?
I need a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Scouso and seconded by Ms. Turner. Any comments or questions? I'm assuming, Ms. Wells or Dr. O'Rourke, that this is about someone who is learning the AP Biology coursework?
That's correct. This is Dr. O'Rourke. That's correct.
Any comments or questions? Okay, voting? I don't have it.
I don't know why it's not taking it. Please specify a motion before taking a vote.
We're experiencing technical difficulties. Please be patient.
You just want to do all eyes, Pam, and I'll mark them in because it's not working.
Should I, maybe I should ask for the people who are not here in the meeting first to vote, and then we can vote in here?
Or I could just call names. It's up to you.
Okay, just call names.
Pam Dobus?
Aye.
Barry Christensen?
Aye.
Connie Rule?
Yes.
Darren McGregor?
Aye.
Jim Modrak?
Aye.
Ken Nagel?
Aye.
Kimberly Turner?
Aye.
Russ Spakusa?
Aye.
Vince Scouso?
Motion passes nine, zero.
I don't know if it worked or not, to be honest.
Mr. McGregor, Personnel Committee, there are eight items.
Yeah, my question is, do we have to go through one by one?
Yes.
Okay, so the first one is the approval of a contract with the maintenance supervisor. Any discussion?
First of all, we need a second.
Make the motion, and then somebody second it.
So, Mr. McGregor makes the motion, and Mr. Christensen seconded. Any discussion?
Would like to make a few comments. So, I'd like to share my thoughts on why I'm voting no on this agenda item this evening. The millage cut that took place last year on June 25th has caused a projected deficit of approximately $3 million. Our country has over 35 million people out of work due to COVID-19 pandemic. This is unprecedented time, and Bethel Park families are dealing with their own financial difficulties. Based on discussions involving the budget and the pandemic, there are many budgetary unknowns for next school year. What if we are faced with tough decisions to furlough or close one of our school buildings because of our financial situation? Many school districts and businesses are trying to navigate through these uncharted waters. So, I would like to be careful about spending taxpayer dollars. I want to focus on a few things in the contract itself. I believe a 10.9% pay increase is not appropriate during these challenging times. If this was a promotion to an elevated position, then I would consider the pay raise due to the added responsibilities that would come with a new job title. But this is not the case. The job description and the duties are the same, and the only thing that would be different is the 10.9% pay increase. For a comparison, the director of facilities position oversees 27 employees across the district, while the supervisor of maintenance position oversees two employees. And if you research other districts, the director of facilities is always at the top of the hierarchy within the facilities flow chart of a district. This is not the case in Bethel Park. The two positions are considered equal, which raises questions about how communication is handled from the top down. The supervisor of maintenance contract does not have built-in performance measures tying job responsibilities to any cost savings to the district. Many employees in our district save us a tremendous amount of money performing the responsibilities that are a part of their job descriptions. One example is our special education department, along with our administrators. As a team, they are involved with establishing meetings with parents, writing and reviewing IEPs, GIEPs, and 504 agreements. These are all legal documents explaining a plan for students' needs. If the protocol, implementation, and writing of these plans are not completed or followed correctly, the district has the potential to be sued for hundreds of thousands of dollars, if not millions. The special ed department does not have a cost savings performance indicator built in to their contract for any substantial pay increase. Why should they not see a 10.9% pay increase based on the savings? I feel that this, I feel that this 10.9% pay increase would not be fair for the rest of our employees, who are also going above and beyond their contracts and saving the district money as well. I also don't think that this 10.9% pay increase is fair for taxpayers, especially during these difficult financial times. Past boards, over the last several years, could have voted on this 10.9% pay increase when the general fund balance and the economy were performing at their very best. But that did not happen. Why? So, doing it now with all of the unknowns that the district is facing has me concerned as a parent, community member, and tax payer. How we spend tax dollars is very important to our community. I know that some community members may even ask this question later on. If the board is so concerned about the budget, why did the board create two assistant superintendent positions? It was discussed as a board, and what the board learned was that it would be revenue-neutral based on reorganizing and retirements, therefore not adding any additional expenditures. But my final thoughts on this matter, I would like to make something very, very clear. I'm for a fair wage and competitive increases to keep our skilled employees, but not a 10.9% pay increase during a millage cut and the COVID-19 pandemic that has compounded our budget problems. As a board, we also retracted the ballot referendum for restoring the millage because of this financial crisis that we are all experiencing. So, paying this 10.9% increase goes against that logic. We need to be mindful of every stakeholder in the community and the school district during one of the most challenging times our nation has ever faced. Thank you.
Other comments?
This is Ken Nagel. I'm going to be a little more brief. First of all, the going rates for people of Mr. Kramer's skill sets is $40 to $45 an hour, plus pension and benefits. That's without supervisory responsibilities, based on 40 hours a week, roughly 50 weeks a year. Comes out to $80,000 to $90,000 a year. Mr. Kramer works more than 40 hours and is responsible for the maintenance of nine mostly old buildings. Additionally, the facilities director is new, and as will be the direct supervisors, the business manager operations, as well as the superintendent, are set to be replaced or are in the process of being replaced. This leads me to the judgment that as most knowledgeable person remaining of the physical condition of our facilities, this contract is not only a fair wage, but is also a necessary bridge while others get up to speed to prevent exponentially more severe maintenance costs and loss of instructional time while we assess our current situation and plan for the future. And to Mr. Scalzo's point, yes, I understand the idea of elevated position versus responsibilities. With everybody above Mr. Kramer leaving, his responsibilities are inherently elevated because he is now the most knowledgeable person in our district about our facilities, about where our weak spots are, about how a lot of the operations of the, of major components work. And I don't see us hiring somebody to fill that position with his knowledge as well as his background of the district at a, at a cost save. There's going to be a learning curve as well as a salary demand that I, I feel is going to cost us more over the next few years while we get our facilities director up to speed, while we get a superintendent on board, while we get a business manager operations director on board. I think that this is a necessary expense to keep our costs down. And I, there is no one more, more knowledgeable or acutely aware of the budgetary pressures that we're facing due to the decisions of the last board. That's why I asked as Chairman of the Referendum Committee that the phallic question be rescinded. I understand the budget pressures not only on our district but on, on the citizens of our community. That's why I think this is the most responsible decision financially for our district going forward.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yeah, this is Darren McGregor. Yeah, I agree with everyone here, but if COVID-19 did not happen, I don't think we were having this discussion, correct? But so, from what I hear, and I've only met Mr. Kramer once, and he seemed like a nice guy, that he is knowledgeable and he does know the systems, but it's just the wrong time.
Go ahead. Any other discussion?
Yes, Mrs. Dobus, I guess my comments would, would revolve around the fact that if Mr. Kramer was no longer an employee of our district, we would have to use an outside service at this point to basically replace his skill set. And if I remember correctly, Mr. Karazi, we were talking $250,000 to $300,000 just to get some of that service agreement with an outside firm. Is that too high?
That was one. We need two.
We need two. So, a 10.9% increase to this person versus $250,000 plus, it's the most responsible thing we could do at this point for the district. Not only does Mr. Kramer have the skill set with our building systems, he can do a lot more than just that and he does on a daily basis. And I would vote for this in a heartbeat.
Any other, any other comments?
I believe that Mr. Kramer has saved this district millions, I mean millions of dollars over the last 10 years. I think if you are very familiar with the trades situation at this time, they can name their price. And I think that all of the things that we have left to do on our buildings, we can't afford to let the maintenance go on these buildings and then afford to bring in outside contractors. I think they're as valuable as our instructional staff, only in a different way. So I believe that Mr. Kramer is well worth the money that we are presenting for him tonight.
Any other comments?
Yes, I would like to.
I'd like to wait. Okay, go ahead.
Who is?
Go ahead, Darren.
Darren, Kim's gonna go, Kim's gonna go before you because you've already spoken once.
I, I have large concerns with COVID-19 and where we are sitting financially with this district and where we are sitting with others in the district with contracts that we're working through contracts and those kinds of things. And in the business world, you are supposed to save your company money. That's part of your job. My, my job is not to cost my company money. My job is to find ways to save my company money. So those things, if he is saving the money, that's in the business world what you want them to do. So those are, that's a concern. I just don't think economically, when we're giving almost 400 lunches a day, that the people of Bethel Park needs one person to get over a 10% raise.
Other comments? Okay, Mr. McGregor, you want to say something else?
It was, actually, I, I would like to make one more, just one final comment.
Is that Mr. Scalzo?
Yes, yes, it is.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I, I misinterpreted your voices.
It's okay. So, if this is so critical, why did this not happen, let's say, last year, the year before, or even the year before that year? With the, you know, with the last several boards, over the last three or four years? If this is extremely critical and we were in primetime shape with our general fund balance, we were not going through a pandemic. If you knew this, why, why didn't, why did it not happen, you know, a year ago, two years ago, three years ago? Why all of a sudden now, during one of the biggest financial crises we are facing right now? I'm with, I'm with Darren. I mean, I, I would like to see, you know, an increase, but to that extent, at this point in time? I mean, we are handing out, we are helping serve like around 400 lunches to Bethel Park residents at the high school. I mean, we, we have to think about the struggles throughout the community. I just think this is not a good time. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I'd like to, to just say again that a 10.9% increase versus a $250,000 plus cost that we're going to incur, which will then cause a potential of a greater deficit. This is the lesser of the items here. To me, if you want to go out and spend $250,000 to $500,000, then don't approve the contract and then you can be responsible to the community.
Okay, any other comments?
I would, yes, I would like to ask for a roll call vote when it comes to vote.
We do that every time.
We do that every time. So, Mr. Karazi, is it up now?
Not yet.
But I mean, whenever you get the results, can you specify the?
Wait, I do have one thought. I have another comment. Again, I just wanted to know, why, can anybody answer the question why any of the previous boards over the last three or four years, if this is so critical, why didn't they do this? Why didn't they, why didn't they increase the salary when times were at their best? Could somebody please tell me why?
Well, I think the question is, why, why is it brought to the board? I think the board, having been on the board, this was never an issue. But the frustrating thing for me is that all of a sudden now, this year, it's a crisis and we have to act on it. So, I, I understand that point. That's probably one of the most relevant points. Has nothing to do with John and what he does. It's, it's, why did it all of a sudden come to the board now as a crisis? I mean, I think that's terrible and, you know, past administration's gone, so, but that's the problem.
I can answer, I can answer your question. Back in August or September, Mr. Kramer told Dr. Pascarella he was gonna retire. And Dr. Pascarella didn't want him to retire. And I believe he brought it to the board in January or February to talk about Mr. Kramer's contract. And it was supposedly it was agreed to then, but then COVID hit and we didn't get the vote on it. So now this is where we are right now. He was gonna retire, so he was, he's not. He was gonna retire and we asked him to stay. That, that's the difference.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I'd like to ask. I'd like. Can you explain to the viewers the difference between retiring this year or in five years for that employee?
Well, he'd be five years older. I'm not sure what else you are asking.
Talking about the terms of retirement.
Well, as terms of retirement, if he retired, if he retired now, he'd get paid for, he'd get half of his insurance paid by the school district until he's 65. If he retires in two more years, he'd get 100% of his insurance paid. It's, it's only a matter of $250 a month for the, of the difference right now. I think the, it's, it's around 500, a little over $500 a month for his insurance. He'd get 100% in two more years and he'd get 50% now. So he, he was planning to retire. That was the conversation that Dr. Pascarella and I had with him and Dr. Pascarella did not want him to leave.
So, Mr. Karazi, was he eligible to retire prior to this year as per his contract?
Oh, yeah, he could, yes.
With the benefits?
He'd get 50% of his benefits if he retired at the end of this school year, this year, which would be June 30th.
You mean in prior years?
In prior years, he would not have gotten 50%. He would, he wouldn't have gotten any until he fulfilled three years of his last contract, which that was in June 2020.
So he just became eligible to retire under his contract?
He came, he became eligible to retire and get some of his benefits paid in this school year, yes.
Thank you. You're talking about, Buzzy, you're talking about Peasars and things like that?
Yeah, he'd retire under Peasars, yes.
Okay, any other comments or questions?
Listen to both sides and it's very difficult at this point in time because, and I said this to our colleagues, John, retaining John's an insurance policy because of the staffing we have right now and the needs will be coming up here. But it is right, it is difficult in the fact that the increase he's getting and the arguments they make in regards to previous board had the opportunity of doing that. But as I said to my other colleagues, there is an insurance policy with John being here and keeping him here for a little bit longer. And I, and I think that kind of weighs into some of our long-term plan and goals we need to be making here.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, Mr. Karazi?
Do you want me to do online or you want me to call names?
I thought you said you could do it online and then tell us the votes.
I can, yes. Voting's open. Motion passes five to zero. You want me to read the nays?
You mean five to four?
Five to four, I'm sorry.
I think just read everybody's name in each.
Pam Dobus, Pam Dobus, sorry. Pam Dobus, yes. Barry Christensen, no. Connie Rule, yes. Darren McGregor, no. Jim Modrak, yes. Ken Nagel, yes. Kimberly Turner, no. Russ Pecusa, yes. And Vince Scalzo, no.
Motion passes five to four. Mr. McGregor, number two.
Okay, the, yeah, the third item is the appointment of Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Special Services. Now, should we lump three and four together?
Mr. McGregor, you missed number two.
Number two.
Oh, jeez, yeah, the, the big one. Approval to close position.
Are you gonna move it?
Mr. McGregor moved it. I need to second, I need a second.
Second.
Mr. Christensen seconded. Any comments?
Yes, I, I would like to make comments. And this actually pertains to this one as well as the next two items, the Assistant Superintendent positions. As we were looking at replacing key positions, it became painfully obvious that our central administration structure was inefficient and stovepipe to the top. Because of pending retirements, conversations turned to how could we clean up responsibilities and reporting structure? I've been concerned that we've been moving further than necessary without soliciting input from all stakeholders. While I'm convinced that restructuring is necessary, I'm not convinced that it should be done outside of a larger strategic plan that includes all stakeholders. Furthermore, I believe that when we're filling such consequential positions, it should be done in a transparent manner that seeks out the best candidates through a thorough application and interview process. I'm also concerned that the current process would promote a false impression that the search for a superintendent will be handled much the same, inadvertently causing quality candidates to question whether to apply. For these reasons, I'm going to be voting no on the following three, following three items. And right now, I would like to move to postpone the question until our next regularly scheduled meeting on June 23rd so that we can solicit more input from the community as well as solicit some input from our staff, which I don't think we've really done that either.
Are you asking to postpone two, three, and four or just two, Mr. McGregor, Mr. Nagel?
Believe I have to do it individually, but I will be asking to postpone all three.
Okay, Ms. Zondo, I believe we need a second for that.
You do. A postponement motion requires a second, yes.
I'll second it.
Give me one second to type this, okay?
Okay. Any comments on the postponement for number two? Okay, then I'm not sure how you want to vote for that, Mr. McGregor. I mean, Mr. Karazi. Sorry.
I get them mixed up all the time.
Mr. Nagel made the motion. Who made the second?
Mr. Pecusa made the second, but that's to.
To table, basically, right?
Yes, to table, yes.
So, yes, for just two. So if we want to table it, we vote yes, and if we don't want to table it, we vote no.
Correct.
Say that again.
If we want to table it, we vote yes. If we don't want to table it, we vote no.
The motion is to table.
The motion is, this is Amy Zondo. The motion is to postpone. Under Robert's rules, motion to postpone and motion to table are two different types of actions.
Okay, so you gotta go back and retype to postpone, Mr. Karazi.
I did type postpone in there. I thought it was the same thing.
You typed something in there?
We are talking about item number two, correct?
Item number two. This is a vote to postpone.
You're gonna have to read, I think, because do you, because it's not the.
It's not coming up on ours at all.
I didn't open it yet.
Well, can you open vote to postpone and approval to close position, separate items?
We have to do the motion to postpone. If it fails, then we'll, we'll vote on the other one.
But you can do both of them?
I hope so.
Okay. Okay, the first motion, the first is to postpone the motion. Postpone the motion to close the position.
Yes, voting's open. Yes is to postpone, no is to not. Motion fails, four to five.
Okay, so the motion was already made and seconded to approve, to close the position. Any comments on that?
Voting's open. Motion passes five to four.
Can we have a roll call on that, Buzzie?
Connie Rule voted no. Darren McGregor voted no. Ken Nagel voted no. Russ Spicuzza voted no. Everybody else was yes.
Mr. McGregor, number three.
Okay, number three is the appointment of Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Special Services.
It's been moved by Mr. McGregor. I need a second. I'll second. Ms. Turner seconded. Discussion on this item?
Yes, I would like to make another point on these positions. Besides the lack of transparency in creating these positions or the process, I am also concerned with Mr. Scialzo's interpretation. These moves are going to be somehow revenue neutral. I still don't understand how creating an additional Assistant Superintendent, having to fill a principal if we do this, and all of the other moves somehow turn out to be revenue neutral. So, I do want to make that point, and with that, I'd like to move, move to postpone the question until our next regularly scheduled meeting on June twenty-third.
Second.
Before, before the board votes on the postponement motion, I just checked the public agenda again, and it does not appear that the name of the individual is available to the public. I may be wrong on that, but it appears to me that the name is still listed as TBD, and I just want to make sure that that, the specific name is read aloud for the publics.
Okay, so it's been moved. Okay, I'll talk about that. It's been moved by Mr. Nagel and seconded by Mr. Spicuzza to postpone this vote until the June meeting, and the position appoints Dr. Janan O'Rourke to the position of the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Special Services. I'm not sure why it was still TBD on the public content, but it was supposed to be put on there. Okay, any comment about the postponement?
Yeah, this is Gary McGregor. And some of you aren't familiar, and some of you are with, with running a district. Now, I can only see it from the ground level. Dr. DePiero has at least twenty-five years on me. I didn't see that, but we're heading into a possible, not even starting up, next year. We're gonna need more feet on the ground, people who understand the district, and people who understand the curriculum. It makes sense to me, makes sense to a lot of people, to not put people in place to make those decisions. We're just putting ourselves back to where Pascarella was. I'm not sure if I can say that, Amy.
Can I make a comment, Mrs. Douglas? My position on this is that I'm not saying that we shouldn't move forward these positions, but I believe Mr. Nagel made a really good point earlier of the fact that there wasn't a lot of transparency in this process. It was, I don't know that we interviewed any other candidates for these jobs at all, and I'm just concerned that how and why the process went the way it did. I understand that we do need to restructure, and I'm not against the restructuring process, but I think we should be more transparent in that process.
Russ, if we're, if we're looking at time constraints and preparation for the next school year, and high school, and everything else, now's the time. We've been talking about this for five months. We've been talking about it in private for five months, Mr. McGregor, and that's my point. What is your point? That we didn't do this in an open and transparent way to the public. We didn't solicit candidates to ensure we get the best people for these consequential positions, and that we're moving ahead without the transparency that we've all promised.
What I understand, it's the board's job to create administrative positions and move people here or there. Is that, I understand what you're saying, but we need to start moving quickly because we're already behind the eight ball.
So, Mr. DePiero is working fourteen hours a day. I'm sure he would appreciate some help up there. I understand that, but in those five months that we were talking about it, it was around the position of Mr. Carrasi while we were doing our due diligence to hire a financial director, business manager. We could have been doing the same for an Assistant Superintendent, and that's, that's my point. That's why I asked to postpone it next month, so that we can, so that we can do a little more vetting and make sure this is what the public wants, and this is, we have the best people for those positions, regardless of personal relationships or where they've been, or any of those things. And to that point, I'd like to ask Mrs. Zondo, Ms. Zondo, could we appoint them in the interim, as interim Assistant Superintendent?
The contracts that have been, that you would theoretically be approving tonight are three-year contracts. That, an interim would involve renegotiating terms with the individuals, so there would be some work that would have to occur before appointment of an interim could happen, and I think that it could be done tonight.
Okay, so this motion has been moved to be postponed by Mr. Nagel and seconded by Mr. Spicuzza. We've had a few people have some discussion about it. Is there any more discussion about the postponement? Okay, Mr. Carrasi?
Voting is open.
So, if you vote to postpone it, so yay?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion fails, four to five. Do you want me to read them?
Yes, please.
Pam Dobus, no. Barry Christensen, no. Connie Rule, yes. Darren McGregor, no. Jim Modrak, no. Ken Nagel, yes. Kim Turner, no. Russ Spicuzza, yes. Vince Scialzo, no. I'm sorry.
Six, three?
These little buttons are hard to read. Three to six. I got them.
I lost track as we voted, too.
There's a, there're little dots on there.
Okay, so now, now we're voting on the motion itself, which was motion by Mr. McGregor and seconded by Mrs. Turner to appoint the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum, we're still on number three, right?
Yes.
For Curriculum and Special Services, and that position would be for Dr. Janan O'Rourke.
Mrs. Wells updated the motions, so if you refresh, you could see them.
Oh, if you refresh your board docs, public and board members, you will see the names that are in there. Huh? It's in our motion, but it's not in the public document.
It's in the public one, too.
Well, I'd have, I have to refresh.
Mine, it wasn't in mine. I had to refresh.
So, are there any more comments about the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Special Services? Okay, Mr. Carrasi?
Voting is open. Motion passes six to three.
Mr. McGregor?
Yeah, give me a second here. I just lost the, the agenda here. Okay, here it comes. So, an assistant...
It's number four.
It's number four. Pam, can you read it? All I could see on my screen is five Assistant Superintendent.
The Board of School Directors approves the administration's recommendation to appoint Dr. Zeb Janzani to the position of Assistant Superintendent for Administration to a three-year contract effective July first, two thousand and twenty, at an annual salary of one-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand, pending the final review of the district solicitor. We have a motion made by Mr. McGregor. I need a second. I'll second. Ms. Turner seconded. Any comments?
Yes, I would like to ask, are there job descriptions for these Assistant Superintendent positions?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. I would like to move to postpone the question until our, our next regularly scheduled meeting on June twenty-third.
Mr. Nagel moved to postpone it. This vote, and Ms. Rule is seconding it. Comments about the postponement?
We've just been talking about, trying to keep our expenses down, and we just really, with two positions, we've just taken another big chunk out of our salary, and I think we need to either be consistent with at least all of the positions that we're adding to our staff at this time.
And again, let me just point out that we need an Assistant Superintendent for Elementary and one for Secondary. If you look at all of our local districts, they have two, for the most part. Now, somebody who understands Secondary would not understand Elementary and vice versa. If you sent me into a classroom for third graders, other than the annual Christmas party that I participate in at William Penn, I would have no idea. And we need somebody focused on those grades. We have outdated curriculum. We have outdated committees. We, we need these things to work, and we need somebody to run those. And we need people to run our strategic plan moving forward. So, I don't understand what a month is gonna do to move along the strategic plan, to move along curriculum, to move along anything else.
I would just like to clarify something that Mr. McGregor commented on. The Assistant Superintendent that we just approved, Dr. Janan O'Rourke, will be in charge of all curriculum and special services, and this position is for administration and operations, not for curriculum, although, and for strategic planning, although everyone will work together, I'm sure, for curricular purposes, administration purposes, and so forth, but specifically, this job description doesn't entail curriculum.
Yes, but like you said, they will have input, you know.
I just, I wasn't arguing, Mr. McGregor. I was just trying to clarify.
Yeah, and you wanna, you wanna find somebody who's, who has a career in upper education, the secondary education, who knows the kids, who knows the community, who knows the schools. And so, again, putting that thing off, to me, is a bad idea.
Okay, are there any other comments about postponing this vote? Okay, I would like to, as you're putting it up, Mr. Carrasi, I'd like to remind everybody that a yay vote is for postponing it, a nay vote...
Is for not.
Is, is for not postponing it. Right, because I think maybe we had some confusion on that.
Motion fails, three to six.
Six, three.
Six, three.
Motion fails, six, three. Okay, so now we have the motion to appoint the Assistant Superintendent for Administration on the table. Mr. McGregor motioned, and Ms. Turner seconded. Any comments or question on this motion?
Voting is open. Motion passes five, six to three.
Motion, motion passes six to three.
Yes. It's a little bit confusing. I need to go read a little bit.
Okay, Mr. McGregor, number five. Mr. McGregor, do you have it up?
Staffing change.
I'd like a roll call on that last vote.
Let me see if I can get back there. I cannot see who it...
It should come up on your screen.
I don't see it.
Yeah, you have to scroll down. Go back up to number four, click on it, and scroll down under motion and voting. It's there.
Oh, cool. I never, I never scrolled down before, I don't think.
The public can see all your votes.
Yeah, the pub, that's the motion and voting the public can see.
Beth Wells says everybody needs to refresh.
Refresh?
Last time I refreshed, I couldn't get back into it for a while.
I had the same problem. I have to go fully back in.
You have to, you have to go where it says authenticate, hit that.
I did, and it made me go fully back in.
But it did update. I mean, I haven't refreshed my browser, and it did update.
Okay, then at least it, I'm seeing the vote, so I was hoping that it was re-updating.
Okay. All right, Mr. McGregor, number five.
Number five is the approval of a staffing change. I believe that's at the high school.
No, it's to, it's to close Independence Middle School Family Consumer Science position.
I'm not seeing that. Yes, you're right. I'm sorry.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. McGregor. I need a second.
Second.
Mr. Christensen seconded. Any comments?
Could somebody explain why they're, why we're closing it?
We're, we're closing it so that the teacher will be split between two, two positions, one at the high school and one at Independence. So, the, some of the content will still be there, but it'll just be moved to Ryan. And I don't know if Beth Wells is on, she may want to explain further, but that's basically what is going on here.
Correct. This is Beth. We person trans, put into transfer from IMS to a split high school IMS position, so once, that's in the next motion, I believe. So, then, once we approve that, we'll have to close her IMS position because she's now IMS slash high school.
Okay, no further, okay, so you can open up the...
Voting's open.
Voting?
Voting's open, yes. Motion passes nine to zero. Glad we're back to that.
Easier to see.
Yeah, so is easier.
Okay, Mr. McGregor, number six.
Yes, number six is the...
Yes, number six is the, um, wait, hold on a second. I have a technical ti... Number six is change of assignment professional.
No, it says involuntary transfer professional.
It's number seven on my board.
Yeah, it's number seven. Number six last...
Change, change of assignment.
Have you all?
Mrs. Dobbs, can you make sure everyone refreshes, please? I had to change the titles. They were the wrong title. So if everyone can please refresh their agenda.
Six is involuntary?
Correct. Number six should say involuntary transfer.
The content is involuntary, so I think that's the right title. If you look at the content window, that says involuntary transfer, so.
And so, number seven will be change in assignment?
Yeah, so we're on number six.
Dr. Dempier now.
Um, involuntary transfer. Mr. McGregor, are you up, or do you want me to read it?
Oh, I'm, I'm getting there. Okay, number six is involuntary transfer. Like I said before, my mouse isn't working, so I have to use that keypad, and it's a little bit longer for me. So, we have seven items under involuntary transfer. Do I have to read out the names and all this stuff?
Uh, we have, um, Mrs. Wells, we have seven under the professional, oh. It's, it's, it's six professionals listed as number one up above. Yeah, so there are six.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Okay, so I have a, um, motion by Mr. Scialzo to approve the involuntary transfers, I mean, not Mr. Scialzo. Mr. McGregor, I need a second.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Spicuzza. Any comments, questions, or do you want to say anything, or Miss Wells, or anybody want to say anything, or is this just, um, what?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
I, I have a question. Uh, what was the process for determining, uh, who ends up where? I, I'm just curious, because I just want to make sure that, you know, we, we have certified people, and, and we've had discussions, uh, in the past about this, but just making sure that they are in an appropriate position, uh, where they have plenty of experience and the transition, uh, will, will be easy, uh, for our students.
Mr. Scialzo, this is, um, Beth. I'll take that question. So, under the contract, the folks that are displaced in these grade levels, this is the K to six, they get to choose in reverse seniority order of the open positions on where they would like to go. That's the process. Myself, um, Dr. O'Rourke, and union representatives met with the teachers on Wednesday, virtually, of course, in inverse seniority order, and they chose their positions.
Okay, thank you.
But this, this title is involuntary transfer. That implies that they...
It's just the way that the contract is.
These were the positions that we cut last week, that we closed last week, so they're the folks that their positions had been closed, and so then they get to choose from the open positions. So, they did not, um, they, they were sort of displaced teachers. So then they had to choose a new grade, if that makes sense. That's why it's called an involuntary.
Okay.
Because they were transferred because they're, they were displaced due to least...
And they got to choose where they're going?
Ma'am, they did.
In, in, in reverse seniority order.
In reverse seniority.
Most seniority to least seniority. I'm sorry.
Yeah. Okay, it's been moved and seconded by, moved by Mr. McGregor, seconded by Mr. Spicuzzo. Are there any other questions or comments on this item?
I'm gonna go back to what Mr. Scialzo asked. Sorry, Mr. Karazi.
It's okay, I stopped.
Um, we're sure they're certified, because we've got middle school teachers going to teach elementary at a kindergarten level.
Yes, the kindergarten... Oh, sorry, go ahead, Mrs. Dr. O'Rourke.
Sorry, Dr. O'Rourke. I should have addressed that to you.
Um, that's okay. Yes, everybody that, um, made this move are all properly certified. They're elementary. Uh, many of the teachers at Neil Armstrong are elementary certified, uh, because at the time, um, historically, when they went to Neil Armstrong, the fifth grade actually were coming from the elementary schools when that was re, when we redistricted back then. Um, so these teachers are elementary certified. And during the process, um, with the Federation, uh, the teachers actually, at, in that reverse seniority, um, the comment at the end, when we were finished with the moves, was that everybody got where they wanted to go. Um, so it was...
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Okay.
Everyone?
All right.
Voting's open. Motion passes eight and one abstention.
Motion passes one, eight with one abstention. Change of assignment, Mr. McGregor?
Yes, a change of assignment is number eight?
Number seven.
Number seven?
We're back to seven. Okay, hold on. Let me get up there.
They look very similar.
I'm getting there. Ms. Dobbs, I lost it. You can read that one out.
Okay, under change of assignment, we have six items.
There you have seven.
Seven.
Up. Seven items. Regarding teachers changing from one position to another, um, I need a second before we talk about it. I made the motion.
Second.
And Ms. Turner seconded it. Um, so, uh, Miss Wells or Mrs. O'Rourke, th- these two, um, the involuntary transfer and the change of assignment looked very similar to us. Can you explain, is the process the same, or is it different, or how does it go about?
Involuntary transfer, these are the people who put their names in for posted positions, or people that had the, um, right to go back to a position that now became open because they were involuntarily transferred before. And then, two of the folks you will see are changing from part-time to full-time employees. So that is their change of assignment.
Okay, any other questions about the, um, change of assignments?
Do we have a picture, a full picture yet, you know, through all these change of assignments, of what the, uh, replacements are for the retirements that we've had? You know, we've got the, you know, people going out, people opting in, we've got the change of assignments. But in terms of the overall, you know, net increase/decrease for the district, um, can you just give us a little bit of an overview where we stand there?
Uh, I, I believe, uh, overall, we will be filling, uh, seven less teaching, uh, assignments, or from teachers who are either retiring or leaving, or closing out positions. But that does not mean that we will not be maintaining the same courses and the same educational quality.
So, from an overall staffing standpoint, it's a, it's a net decrease of seven.
It's a net decrease of, uh, seven.
But we've moved people from halftime to full-time in that process.
That is correct, and we did. It was going to be, I believe, eight. I could be off by a teacher, but the two half times going to whole time would make it seven.
Any other questions? Okay, open the voting, please.
Voting's open. Motion passes nine to zero.
Okay, the final, uh, one under personnel is acceptance of resignation.
Second.
It's been motioned by Mr. McGregor and seconded by Mr. Spicuzzo to accept the resignation. Um, I believe this is just changing a date, if that, that's correct.
That's correct. We're just extending the date. We've already accepted the resignation, but we had to modify the date forward, and you see that date affected now at July the 15th, and it was earlier before. So, it's not really that much of a change.
So, it, it's intended for this person to help train the person to replacing?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions about that? Okay, voting open, please.
Voting's open. Motion passes nine to zero.
Motion passes nine to zero. Mr. Christensen?
Oh, are we done already with Darren's section?
And it's all, and it's all posted at the bottom of the page there.
Okay. I, I moved to adopt the sports medicine agreement with A, um...
AHN?
AHN.
Okay, I need a second.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Turner, so it's been moved by Mr. Christensen and seconded by Ms. Turner. We did have some questions about this last week, and you said you were meeting with them?
We did meet with them, and they came back with a little bit better offer. The, the price per year has gone, has gone down to, I think, two years ago.
It's gone down to what?
It went down to what the, what the cost was two years ago.
Okay, that's not what it says in our stuff.
Okay.
I don't know. We talked about taking this one off, but, uh, I don't know what it says in your, in your...
The, the notes say it went up $2,000.
Up $2,000, up 2%, and, and 2% increases on top of that.
All right, that wasn't updated, so we should probably table it.
So, how about this? How would if I rephrased the motion?
Okay.
So that, at least verbally, it covers exactly what you said?
Okay.
And then, if we can update this?
Okay, so, um, to do that, um, you would have to say, I'm, I'm voting to amend the motion to this.
So if you can tell me what the details are?
I, I can't tell you what the details are right now.
Or just what the total cost is?
He said, let's just table it until June 30th.
I think we should just table this.
Okay, there's no deadline? I thought there was a deadline where...
No, we, we could do it in June.
June 30th is the deadline, so we can do it.
I think we should table this.
Okay. So, can I table my own motion, or?
I believe you can. I don't know.
Amy, how do we table this?
Yeah, I was gonna chime in. I agree with the recommendation to table, and because Barry moved it, somebody else is going to have to move to table.
Okay, but wait a second, Ms. Sundell. Is tabling or postponing the better motion here?
I would table it because the, what we're going to end up seeing is a different motion, not just changing the time, which would be postponement. I would, I would move to table.
Move to table the motion?
Okay, Mr. Nagel moved to table the motion, and Ms. Turner moved to second the tabling of the emotion, the motion, the emotion. So, any question, any comments about the tabling?
Yes is to table, no is to not table.
Yes is to table. Yes is to table, no is to not table.
One comment. I just wanted to move that one, see if I could get one passed.
I was hoping you'd make that motion, Ken, okay?
Very good, Ken. Motion passes nine to zero to table.
Okay, motion passes nine to zero to table. So, um, Mr. Christensen will have to take it off the table in the committee meeting in June, to be put on the, to be put on the, um...
Can somebody make a note with that into the agenda? Because I'll forget in a month.
Okay. All right, Ms. Turner?
Okay, we have the third and final reading for the revision to policy 201, which Dr. Dempier and I both explained during public comments.
And it's actually now in, in the public content?
I believe so, yes. That's how we were looking at it.
It is in the public content now. Thank you, whoever did that. Appreciate it.
I think that was, uh, Mary Beth, but thank you, Mary Beth, if you did that.
She told me she couldn't do it. Okay, so it's been moved by Ms. Turner. I need a second for that, um, policy revision to 201.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Turner and seconded by Mr. Christensen to approve the third and final reading of the board policy 201 admission of students. Any comments or questions? Okay, then let's vote.
Voting's open. Motion passes nine to zero.
Motion passes nine to zero. Mr. Spicuzzo, would you take, um, the...
More than happy to.
Other?
Yes, uh, two items under other. Well, first item, I will move the selection of our voting delegates, delegates for the PSBA delegate assembly, which is, I guess, now an online meeting. Is that correct? Um, uh, we want to appoint Connie Rule and Ken Nagel to those voting delegates.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, um, moved by Mr. Spicuzzo, seconded by Mr. Christensen to, um, select as our voting delegates for the PSBA assembly meeting Connie Rule and Ken Nagel. Any questions, any comments? Okay, approval?
Voting's open. Motion passes nine to zero.
Motion passes nine to zero.
And the second, um, item under other this evening that I would like to move is the approval of resolution number 92 dash 2020, supporting charter school reform.
It's been moved by Mr. Spicuzzo. I need a second.
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Turner. Ms. Sundell, would you be, um, willing to give us a short, um, overview of this particular resolution?
I can open it on my computer, so it'll actually be even more short, because I'm having to...
Well, it's the charter, it's the charter school reform, so you can just...
Yeah.
Since you presented it...
This is something that had been recommended, um, from PSBA, understanding, um, that the, that many districts are, um, you know, looking at their own funding structures, looking at, um, you know, cut, you know, tough decisions, and recognizing that, um, charter form, charter school, uh, funding does need, um, to be reviewed and reformed. And I apologize that I can't, I can't pull it up right now on my browser to get more specifics, but, um... Does anybody have any questions while I try to work with this?
I think it's a, it's a necessary thing that we all are in favor of, because it's a, it's costing us money, and it's not a fair formula at this time. So, I know when I read through it, I thought it's a good thing that we are, um, supporting this, and that, um, they're trying to get this through with, um, PSBA and, and organizations like that, so, um, any other questions or comments about it? Okay, Mr. Karazi?
Voting's open. Voting, uh, motion passes nine to zero.
Motion passes for the charter school reform nine, zero. Um, at this time, I have, um, one comment from public comments, but my, my browser is still turning, so if somebody finds another one...
Okay, greeting. This is from Shanna Willis, 5844 Monongahela Avenue.
I'm disturbed by the lack of transparency on the assistant superintendent positions. If you've been discussing this for five months, why did the community not get a chance to weigh in? You have effectively given a $15,000 raise to one employee and a $25,000 raise to another. With the current financial state of the district, why was this not a, not a public discussion? How does this fit into the plans that we were promised when our community voted for change last year?
Does anyone else see any other public comments, because my browser still started doing?
There's another one.
There's another one.
Would you like to read it?
I'll take a shot at it. Sharon Janasek, 4314 Anna Street, thank you all for your time you voluntarily dedicate to the children of our community, it's appreciated. Your jobs are not easy as they weren't going to be, regardless of anything that has transpired since December. Given the tremendous impact of the changes required by COVID-19 pandemic in terms of education and your meeting process, plus the budgetary restraints that have only gotten worse, there is a tremendous amount of work ahead for each of you. It is even more vital that you all find ways to work together with each other and with stakeholders in our community, to both ensure that your decisions reflect the concerns of the community, and to ensure that your workload is shared with and informed by those stakeholders. As an involved parent and a member of the public, I agree with Mr. Nagel that the public should have been more aware and more involved in the administrative restructure that occurred tonight. Additionally, I agree with Mr. Nagel and Mr. Spakusa that while restructuring was definitely needed, it would have made more sense to approach all of this during the strategic planning process, so that the fullness of where we are headed is encompassed in all of these decisions. It is true that the stress of both the budget and the pandemic is going to increase over the summer, however, we could have made interim appointments instead of committing to multi-year contracts. We have not yet, as an entire community, discussed where we'd like to be in five or 10 years, or how we were going to get there. Our community is full of stakeholders who are involved, interested, and committed to working in the best interest of all children. It is my hope that you extend a lot of opportunities for all of us to share our ideas and concerns in full transparency process. It was your commit, commitment to transparency that got most of you into this position after all, and while I still do believe that the early admissions should be restricted, should not be restricted just to students who have a September birthday, I do appreciate that you took many of our concerns into account. Thank you all for your hard work, Sharon Janasek.
And I don't see any others. So, at this time, we have board comments, if any board member would like to make any comments? Okay, Ms. Rule is first.
I just want to say that Heather Fontana of the IMS Consumer Group, I just was so pleased and proud that she was a teacher here at our district. She went around and distributed 31 sewing bag knapsacks that each of her students had made, and she personally delivered them to all of their houses, and they were just so excited that their teacher would take the time to do that, just gave them that personal touch in a time when it really meant extremely more than usual. Thank you, Ms. Fontana.
Mr. Spakusa, I mean, you don't have to say anything.
Yeah, I know, I really wasn't gonna say anything, but I actually ran into Mr. Consul Magna at the Memorial Day service yesterday, and I told him to his, to his face that I appreciated everything that he's been doing, but I wanted to give him a little bit of recognition here, because he's doing an unbelievable job, and we really appreciate what he does for us and our students and their families.
Yeah, that's true.
Ms. Turner?
I just, you know, hope that everybody is staying safe. I know today was Senior Day, kind of Senior Day at the high school, where they received their yard signs, I'm hoping to see some nicely decorated ones over the next week or so in the yards, and they received their capping gowns and other things, so looking forward over the next couple of weeks to see these seniors get some recognition that they truly deserve in this hard time. And to the work ahead, you, for those that have commented, we need some people in place to do a strategic plan, we just can't do a strategic plan with people that are retiring. So, as we move forward, I believe transparency will come in the way that everybody is asking, but we need people in place to begin the transparency that is required for a strategic plan.
Do you want to say anything?
Yeah, just a, a comment, really, on the budgeting, and so we should address this next time, but there was an email that Ms. Turner shared on the state where they voted to freeze all subsidies, all payments to school districts, so I know we, we had an increase in there, so we'll have to factor that into the next version of the budget.
And that only passed the House today?
Passed the House.
It's onto the Senate.
Yeah, move on to the Senate, but, so it's a risk, okay, but I would imagine if it's, the House also voted to freeze all state salaries, including their own, today, so I imagine this bill will also pass the Senate and be approved by Wolf.
Mr. McGregor, do you have any comments?
I just want to wish everyone a nice and healthy weekend coming up. If anyone has any questions, you can email me, or you can PM me on Facebook, or call me if you have my number, I'll always respond, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Nagel?
I'd just like to say, our staff has done a phenomenal job from bottom to top with very unfamiliar, in a very unfamiliar environment, and I just want to thank all of our staff for the hard work that they've all done, adapting to the challenges, the unprecedented situations, and I want to say congratulations to all of our graduating seniors, and while this might seem very daunting to you right now, you guys are going to have an experience when you go forward that you're going to be able to tell your grandkids when I was a kid, so maybe look at the silver lining in that, but thank you all for everything.
Mr. Scalzo?
I just want to wish everyone well and to stay safe. I don't really have any further comments, I, I think that I, I said enough this evening. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Modra?
Yes, we're looking forward to the graduation, hopefully, if things go positively to a green, maybe we'll be outdoors in June, but thank you for the seniors and their families for their cooperation and patience as we try to work out some type of plans that meets everyone needs with the guidelines that are given to us from the state and the CDC, and thank you for all the people that are working in our district and dealing with the challenges that are in front of them now, and know that there'll be a lot more coming here in these next few weeks and few months, and hopefully there'll be more, we'll want to jump into it and get these changes made we need to see in our district, thank you.
I would like to also thank the staff for all of the hard work they've done over the last few months, like to wish everyone that you stay safe in the coming weeks and months as we emerge from this COVID isolation. We are, as a school board, working very hard, we recognize that we will not always disagree, but we will always promise you a good discussion, and we also listen to what you say and take it seriously, and we, we will do our best in the future to continue to involve everyone in our processes, particularly as we move towards our strategic plan and our superintendent search, so thank you all, see you at graduation. Yes.
What preparations has our school taken with the election being here, June 2nd? It's going to be held at the high school?
Correct.
Does anybody know?
Yeah, go ahead.
We worked with the county, and they're going to set up the election at the high school in nine different rooms, on fourth floor, so that's the main floor going in, and they were supposed to deliver the voting machines the other day, but they, they, that was postponed, and they, hopefully they'll be here before June 2nd, so...
So, we haven't done any sanitizing over there yet, though?
Well, we clean it every day.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Consul, Mr. Consul Magna is aware, because we distribute lunches right out there in the front area also, so that would have to be moved off to the side?
I'm not sure that we told anybody yet, to be honest with you.
Well, cards just went out to everybody in the community, so everybody, I mean...
It was in the almanac also.
I'll make sure he knows.
He's gonna have to probably move it to the gym area for distribution. I think he totally knows, but I just, you know, we, there's gonna be a message that has to go out to parents about how they're picking up the lunches and those kinds of things on that Tuesday.
Right, so I love...
From a, from a, I guess, a capacity standpoint on the voting, I gotta believe it's gonna be a pretty low turnout with now, when you can do absentee ballots, and it's kind of a, it was definitely not an off-year election cycle, but everything's kind of, at least at the national level, been decided.
Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Rule.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Christensen. All in favor, are you gonna put up the vote for us?
I can, sure. Go ahead, it's open.
Not yet.
One.
Motion passes nine to zero.
Motion passes nine to zero, good night, all.